Kushe and kabo to you with the watch and listen. This is NAKU you see the meet you live now AYV television and radio. Me now Samuel Ibrahim Kromar. But inside we use today, the Free Town City Council don't gain 200 youth man them, but waste management and micro enterprises program.
We need for as a city, and just say we provide opportunities. The growth of a city, not the growth of the people, and owner, not the people.
The Creo Descendants Union Maryland Branch don't go shape some food and order yam yam them to all people them, na regent, Hastings and Watalo communities.
We na Maryland, we na KDU Maryland, we always say we get a couple. Oh, so what they get a discover for? When they get a couple, na for the we young people them, we there ya so. When, when God bless you, not for you safe, na for the you bless all that person.
And now that we get for now inside in addition of the program Creo Use, but first inside Use. Free Town City Council don't gain but over 200 youth man them on proper waste management, micro and enterprises program. Them youth man there ya, we them again, go get 40 guys secure them. And then we get for the pay as them they use then try to secure there for do their work and safe, then we help the country for push before in middle level manpower. We report our Sheikh Mohammed Sela gets more on the story.
This is the second phase, outside them be train over 800 youth them by waste management business within the youth youth groups in the city. Inside January this year, let me take salon as 1.5 cities them with na low, middle income country them for make them gain grant from the global cities fund. The mayor of Free Town, even like he saw ya say, this is a part of a transform Free Town project.
We need for as a city, and just say we provide opportunities. The growth of a city, not the growth of the people, and owner, not the people. So this program, the whole focus, cleaning the city, strengthening owner chances in life, giving opportunity for grow, waste management, dirty business, na money business.
Some part the people them, we them be trained, be tell thank you and same way so talk about the way and manner how this important to them. As they say, they don't give them all the basic thing them what they need for do their work.
I mean, we the youth group we come, see really video they do well. And I tell everybody, my colleague them, we there are. This don't have how we here for the people. Even we say set, we don't give for made a theory.
This initiative here go contribute at least 60% per solid waste collection and same way so side for go left the dirty them by 2020. Sheikh Mohammed Sela, AYV News, Free Town.
Now Budget Salon together with Budget Advocacy Network don't present to the country how the DTB address them and not able for use the country. Um, the COVID-19 fund we them and give them the right way. Inside and research, then penalty law not been there for manage the 92.1 billion loans where them be used per the COVID effect. And plenty contracts them, we them be award, not been deserve the payments them, we they make for them contracts they do. And safe plenty payments we then be make, not get documents to the effect of about 3.1 billion loans expenses. And this budget, they demand accountability as the same way so they bring recommendations them, Lucy and Kulanda gets more.
Transparency and accountability, na sign of good governance. Inside Salon, most time the country they lost plenty money because the citizens, they know they able hold their duty balance there accountable for all their money ah where they lost na the country in Budget. And this they make the country they go bien. According to the country director for Budget Sierra Leone, Alasansi say, he say all them findings there are we then do, na team, where they feel say therefore bring count to the country in notice and safe, then provide solution them for ensure say the country in money no go they disappear so no more, especially inside this health emergency.
So like one for find out, one for no waiting, more the money can inside the country for support we for um we for face COVID-19, we win a Corona. And same way so um because you so money we can inside the country, it can be loan, it can be grants.
As part of the stakeholder them now would see, where be the path of this finding presentation, Doris Fatima Weber been talk say, this kind information where they don't get, na team where they make them safety map on and toast them, for they able face corruption.
Well, to stakeholders them, this mama salon that we get them, we not get no two mama salon. A fine for there we work as Sierra Leoneans them, so that the country will go before. Because when your country go before, you safe don't go before and you go proud for be as Sierra Leonean in and out of your country.
Inside them findings eh where they do, the operations director for Budget Sierra Leone, John Conte, been talk say, the COVID-19 source them, be therefore affects the social sector they like, health, education and serve the agriculture sector. The same way so talk say, all them findings there are where they do not for which homes.
But the only thing was that because na emergency, uh certain people them bypass them procedure they did, they not go through the correct procedure, they make audit pick them. So they were the call say government whatever do you for go the monitor, closely monitor. Then also, now they could work in collaboration with the Anti Corruption Commission. You see, Anti Corruption Commission for the make sure say they look into the internet deeply.
During this gathering here, Budget and safe Budget Advocacy Network not been glad here because key frontliner them not been there per the meeting where they be in fight for there they able presents to them for Creo Use, me and Lucy and Kulanda the reports now Watalo.
Now UNICEF Salon don't celebrate their 75th years of existence with the theme we see Reimagine the Future for Every Child. The UNICEF country representative, we for we the for Salon, we na Dr. Sulaiman Bramo, he say despite the COVID-19, but them over the years, they been able for make significant steps for improve the life of peking them with good health and safe get better education. Lansford McLean put the story together.
UNICEF Salon don't join the globe for celebrate their 75 years of existence. Inside their theme, reimagine the future for every child. Where the country representative for UNICEF, they talk, Dr. Sulaimani Bramo, he say over the years where they don't do na the country, they don't do plenty thing them for make peking and get the safe space na society. It's same way so talk say, despite the Corona sick within na the country and all about the world, one part the main thing they where they don't do, na for see that then peking they get better education and give them well body. He carry on for talk say, they don't create platform for them, for giving the opportunity so that they go participate and plenty program them. Inside Eon Talk, the chief director, na the Ministry of Gender and Children's Affairs, Joseph Sina say, one part the role where they don't they play as government, na for see that peking and get the rights so that then safe go participate na society. It's same way so carry on for see, the Child Rights Act, na one good thing where they don't put together, and safe Salon and other country don't sign a chapter, for see that peking and get the rights for live freely na society. But waiting some of the peking them make up for this kind program, that make a talk to the president for children's forum network, we na mama do bury. A talk say, this is timely for UNICEF for all this kind program, but urge on the government that therefore continue for give them basic education where they deserve, especially for the disabled peking them.
We also get some gaps them and some red lines there as peking they way we think the government must consider these things. Um, of course, we they say every child and every rights, so that means say every child um forgets the absolute rights to everything. Now, um, we get a free healthcare system na Sierra Leone, but only limited to under five peking them. So as peking them, we the advocate say, there you not only stop with under five peking them, but to continue with other peking them until the 15, 16, 17, because then also matters, there are also children according to the convention. And also one thing where I mentioned that, um, climate change now and outbreak in crisis we uh the we we the threatening with sustainability, with education, with health and even with lifestyle. So as peking them, we they call on the governments and in partners like UNICEF and other partners, for they then see how best then um put things in place for see how best we uh minimize this, mitigate the issue of climate crisis. Because we believe say, anything when it comes to disaster, na the peking them more they suffer from them. Because um if we experience anything bad, the peking are the most vulnerable people. So we the call on the government for put major in some of them thing there. I believe say as peking then, then I want in where we always um particular about the future, because um it's not only about us, we the graduate, just non for go to adult level, but after peking life, how you get, what is life after a child? So this is some of the things where I believe say people they consider, where people like UNICEF they consider about um building a future for every child. So I believe say the celebration timely, because then come with people for discuss on issues about child rights and protections.
The program be end, we saw see some big allegio them, like the United Nations representative for Salon, Guion Talk, and some other performance them from per peking them all about the country. For AYV Creo Use, me and Lansford McLean the report now Free Town. Now Creo Descendants Union Maryland Branch as part of them food basket program, don't shape food items them to all people them, where it tap na regent, Hastings, Alan Tong and safe Watalo communities. This now for see how themselves can assist them people here for enjoy the Christmas season. Make we see how all this may happen.
The primary objective of the Creo Descendants Union KDU Maryland chapter, na for promote and preserve the history, culture and heritage of the Creo there na Salon, through their reflection, education and charitable giving. This agile, where they do to community people them, where tap within regent, Hastings, Watalo, community, na for see how they can able for support the old people them during this Christmas period there so, so they not go left bien, for me they say be part of the Christmas celebration.
Stacey Hamilton King, na the treasure of for KDU Maryland Branch.
We na Maryland, we na KDU Maryland, we always say we get a couple. Oh, so what they get a discover for? When they get a couple, na for the we young people them, we there ya so. When, when God bless you, not for you safe, na for the you bless all that person. So when God don't bless me daily, we don't say, hey, bless we God, we go for shame at all we young people there. And we go say for we na we the Christmas, na we don't say. Inside you Creo house, you jollof wear sport must wear. So we say, oh, we people don't know where ever for when the jollof wear sport who eat them, for let the jollof wear sport go wear this Christmas. So we wish we be able forgive all man at the village, but we don't go able do that.
It's how the people let me feel with this kind agile, where the Creo Descendants Maryland Branch do for them during this Christmas period there so.
I feel happy, I glad here, I welcome owner, and make God bless owner. Let more God increase more and more for owner.
Feel happy, too, and nobody expect. So I feel happy and I tell, tell them thank you, because this go a great way. It's na baby world they don't fool, fool for we. Because we say Christmas we Creo, we therefore enjoy and cook we prepare soup, cook we yams, cook we with soup, eh we fufu. So this way you can give yourself, it go go a very great way.
Me, for me inside, I feel good, because last year, it not be fine for me. But this year, which one I don't do so for we, for me in particular, I tell God thank you, I bless owner.
See as owner, the go put in people eh memories back, uh Christmas them. But you do used for see Christmas, um, thing hold down the go bad. But this way owner do so now, we make eh reverse people eh mind, Christmas they come. A lekka we bad so they, Creo na Creo.
Eleanor Jokome Meziga, na the edum man for Regent Village.
Perfect way there yeah so, for the one day, we not able, you know, forget something. You now say Christmas now, sorry, for tell we for glad. So they don't look and say, so people eh there, they have not work before, but now thing they work for them, bet they no day. So they bring, I can use the old that work back for them, they can't drive it to na this. They can't la di with owner. And whatever owner get from there, owner just tell they no more thank you and tell they they God bless them.
AYV Creo Use, Lansford Luwe Metzka the report now Free Town. You watch Creo Use na AYV Television, we parable for today say, na before food be and food they falla, na with that parable there, I go left for some comeback just now. Continue for there with we, as we get more to inside Use.
Here's how to avoid bringing COVID-19 into your homes. Wear long sleeves before leaving your house. Avoid wearing rings, bracelet or earrings considering them as support for the virus. Limit public transportation as much as possible. Don't touch your face until you have washed your hands. At the supermarket, take a maximum safety distance of 1.50 meters. Use electronic payments. Arriving at home, take off your shoes, clean your phone, take off your clothes and wash them. Wash your hands with soap and water for 20 seconds and put all your shopping bags aside for three to four hours. Clean them and put them away.
Yes, I don't come back and still watch Creo Use to the meet you live now AYV Television Channel 33. Me now Samuel Ibrahim Kromar, well now we continue with Use. But as we for address them corporate social responsibility, the Salon Insurance Company don't donate food items them to Conot Hospital, Rukupa Hospital, and safe approve school orphanage and cop orphanage. They move by the company now for make sure say them peking them within at them place they get better food, especially inside this festive season. Mohammed Bakar Kamara gets more on the story.
The visit by this well-known insurance company to Conot Hospital and Free Town, Rukupa Hospital, na is part of Free Town, approve school orphanage and crops orphanage now Watalone, for provide for them peking the within our hospital and orphanage food and also give word of encouragement to the mama them and the people where they take care of, the peking them within at the orphanage home. This well-known insurance company over the year, don't they support Salon people them with plenty things them, and then believe say, the only way the country will go, na where Salon people and come together for help people them, we not get. Utsman Kamara, na the general manager for this well-known insurance company.
Well, the importance of this is that we the child who identify with the less privilege unfortunately now with society. And we see say, not to all man get the upper hand, for there do for himself, what he would do for himself. So we get for identify with then, over the years, we be know they do, uh they target different, different groups them who physically need with support. We just bring some, get some food items, some rares, yabas, uh tomatoes and some other things then for the orphanage. Uh, for the health center there, na then food item then for tea and the rest of that.
Some of the commander them and the people where they care for the peking they within our orphanage, be tell plenty thank you to this well-known insurance company, as they say, then kind of donation there are, go help them and go make them peking them get better well body.
Thank you for this Christmas. There's a to na be come, we we really appreciate you, Kuma again. May God bless owner, abandon, and we go carry, set this eh, we na eh, show we come, we come eh, kill eh, na we do. We really appreciate you, na we, na we.
And I appreciate the team who come up from Sliko, we then there this afternoon for come uh offer a gift to young people that will get a lifeline in our leadership home. We, we done there for quite a long time. I think the demand fit say, today na we on there and the double member we, we want for appreciate them for this gift.
This well-known insurance company believe say, for support people them, na good thing where everybody for they do, especially for care for peking them within our hospital and peking them within our orphanage, the company say. Now tax, where they tax, some of them staff them, where they work na the company, na they put together the lily and nothing where they get, for make them buy for them peking them within our orphanage home and hospital provision and other food item them. For AYV Creo Use, me and Mohammed Bakar Kamara, the report now Free Town.
When I reach out Salon One Organization, where they get link to women them, na the rural communities them, don't distribute over 100 million loans to women them. This na copper, where the women there have been raised for themselves, um for all over the year, under the community savings and loan projects, we na the money them, where the women there are, they keep for themselves, Ali Alvin Kabo gets more.
Reach out Salon One Organization, where they get link to women them, for able for do something for themselves, don't distribute copper among plenty women them, under the community savings and loan project. This na copper where the women ah don't raise, as an organization, as plenty of them, not able keep the money for themselves.
So today, as we all know, we don't come here for come do the distribution of the money them, where owner don't contribute. At least, um, this particular um program go for 10 months and we hope say, by the grace of God, next year we will, we will, it will go for one year, because na February we start time and then, as we all be increasing, we for, we for shave in the month of um November, eh we for end in November and we shave in December. So one of the aim of this particular um scheme, now for see how we go able for encourage owner the women them, na Banga Farm community and not just Banga Farm, but the Peninsula and the coastal community as well, where especially owner where they do um um small petty trading business them, for able for help owner for transform owner business them.
Some of the beneficiary them, be tell thank you to reach out Salon, as plenty of them confess say, this Osusu initiative, go help them for expand them business and do plenty other thing them na life. For sake of that, then they ask the organization, for carry on with the community savings and loan project, so that they will continue for develop themselves as woman.
Now really easy at all to get a women, for them, we wait them for do this kind of thing. Um, the initiative actually where eh reach out Salon, bring to we thought step there na a very good one. Some of we, we not pay for provide, we not able forget money, we not get I am, now we catch box them, we go be safe. Please, the women of our lives, we know what we don't make, make this, what they don't do, they don't do well. So this way you don't do for me, we don't try, we don't put, we not make one word, we don't do ah. So this month we are don't get, and they go add bad market money, ah sangre boku peking them, my man not well, so what they don't do for me, I glad it say, eh I glad it say, eh I want back there, we do ah back there, pass so.
As all this, they be reach out Salon, they encourage other organization them for partner with them, as plenty of the women them want be part of this project, but they not get the resources for reach them all. For AYV Creo Use, me and Ali Alvin Kabo the, me and Ali Alvin Kabo the report now Free Town.
Um, as National Monitoring and Evaluation Directorate and partners them, they evaluate the three lessons lands from government of Salon, response to COVID-19 pandemic. WHO don't urge NACOVAC for intensify the vaccination of um citizens and heightening the preventiveness mechanisms for future health emergencies. Salifuchan Okamar gets more.
This meeting, we Named organized, na been for discuss three lessons there, where they found out but, na one survey, for make sure say, the country go able for build sustainable system them, we go prevent, other sick them, we go hit Bambi. All the three type coronavirus sick them, then they now na Salon, with the new one, na the B11529 Omicron variant, with NACOVAC being confirmed inside December this year. According to the WHO representative, even where the Omicron virus not on the report bad bad thing then, like the other two, we get for do with long hospitalization and die business, but Salon need for do more. Now that make, he recommend to NACOVAC say, then for increase the way within the vaccinate people them, say because the number of citizens then, we don't take the macleat na Salon, eh not boke yet, eh carry on say, then for help for build system them, we go make them able for face this sick and other sick then, we go come Bambi. And same way so tell people and say, this new Omicron virus, eh the transfer fast pass all the other one there, where the world don't experience. Since the first case inside March 2020, Salon don't record but 6,452 coronavirus case them and 121 people and don't die. According to NACOVAC, for face the coronavirus sick, na team where government and citizens then get for join on, because say nobody not safe until all man safe, and that go only happen if people them willing for take the macleat. The Director General na Named, when a James Edwin, been say, for monitor the way government they respond to the coronavirus, na important thing for able help the government, for know how effective the face they go on and make sure say transparency and accountability go there, for help let the country win the face. For Creo Use, me and Salifuchan Okamar the report inside Free Town.
Well, the Ministry for Political Affairs, they are about for launch the government citizens portal, them they work ah all about the country, for gets the views of the public on this technology, where the people will get access, but the thing them, where they happen within the government. Makeni, na the recent place suicide, the whole this engagement, August 13, where we report on Makeni send this story.
The pre-launch for the consultation of the government cities in portal, be bring together big allegio them, like paramount chief, civil society them, religious leader and boku other one there. Mohammed Rushakonten, at the high city office and at the Ministry of Political and Public Affairs, and eh be talk more about this engagement.
Today na Makeni presently, just for car explain people them, but the cities in portal, where the Ministry of Political Affairs, they there in between, so that people them, the cities they will get chance, for me they interact with governments. Because one of women aim, na for make the citizen and the government get understanding, so that whatever problem come, the ministry and the government, they go address that. That's why make could eh really go in line with the MDS them, the CSO, they all, they come together so that we go able for address the issues them. Because when citizens lay complaint, let's say lay complaint from the ministry department or agency, then we get for send the complaint to the ministry department or agency where responsible, then they will send feedback. If you are not send feedback, the citizens will get confidence.
Participants then be get this for say.
Not be concerned, Free Town is struggling for electricity past waiting at the purpose. How sustaining this program, where we don't get electricity? You know we require that optic cable and challenge in this country. And we only network, where na say I tell, na the one spot, the company themselves will get like after selling, air tel and Q cell. So how this thing go be a reality, when we need strong internet?
Me and the mayor, we need to see, let eh help the people, let eh protect the people there. When you make at the top so, when you see something to my it talk ah, eh say it is a sabotage with government, this eh really talk about with government. But we not come for can talk, we not come for can talk with peking, na the part where the government eh do now, we go on talk, if they say they not talk ah, eh go eh forget to mistake.
PC by Sabra Kasanga the second, na the Austrian Mount Chief, and eh be welcome this idea where the ministry come up with.
Why should na they are, I don't see the representatives eh where they are, well, some people eh go say small, but in us volume, because we na don't represent poor people there. And so today, na eh there, where we for take very serious, then we na bring issues. On behalf of the paramount chief of all Bombay district, on behalf of the mayor and the CEO, they are where they are so, the district administration, they are welcome, you guess they way come, the one they way they are, and when are the participants to this meeting, let God make we get a very, very fruitful meeting.
So AYV Creo Use na Makeni, me and August ETL.
Plenty thank you to August ETL to eh for that story. Well, now that time for support and for that Lansford McLean just joining inside the studio. Lansford, Kushe Kabo and we glad to forget you.
Plenty thank you and good evening to you, Samuel Ibrahim Kromar.
So waiting inside the basket for today.
Plenty thing so far, well first inside with Tori, the head of media and marketing. For the Salon Football Association winner Ibrahim Kamara, uh don't talk say, eh no glad here with the relaunch of the Leonstar supporter jazzy, where the Ministry of Sports and National Sports Authority been do, na the Bintumani Conference Center, eh be say this um as SLFE, and then get the rights for launch the official Leonstar jazzy, where them go, where they don't do last month, eh where that be happen safe, at the Bintumani Conference Center and that, now be the president been do that, we own reporter, we na Issa Bangwa, get more inside the story.
The Salon Football Association, then be be the force for launch the official Leonstar jazzy, where be cost 400,000 loans. Recently, the Ministry of Sports and National Sports Authority, pan them basket from launching, the country chief minister be unveil the same jazzy where be cost 120,000 loans. Ibrahim Kamara, when at the head of media and marketing Salon Football Association, been talk to AYV about their position for the official supporters jazzy, where the National Sports Authority be launch.
I must say, it's a little unfortunate that uh, that kind move they they come up from the Ministry of Sports. Uh, what we think say, well, um, I mean, partners in development, as a matter of fact, we then, then I supervise body over we, so we cannot be launching the official kit and then they launch some other thing, we get for do with the same half cone move they prepare for. It's, it's really unfortunate on that part, but like I say, it's up to them. We are gonna go ahead with which we don't launch and which we don't put together, and any general public know. You know, like I say. public know you know like I say earlier on every fan going for where waiting Kai Kamar for example or Zingile get for where inside Cameroon at the half corn at the end of the day.
Be continue for toxic SLFA don't do Boku thing for see say then prepare Leonstar's team well where them go take part na the African Cup of Nation next year inside Cameroon same way so in talk say then the plan for old press conference for see say then communicate so people them about how far they don't prepare the team.
We don't do plenty uh we still get some more for do basically because preparation and team way you know wherever get to 100% but I mean we we don't do a lot basically and eh I can tell the general public say we there at the point now we you know we're satisfied with the gas which we don't do and this not means say we're complacent we still get for do a lot more we still get for do which we need for do for.
The head of Media and Communication National Sports Authority Eric Fomba been talk say what they make they launch the supporters jersey now because the government don't see say people then they cry too much for the amount of the current Leonstar jersey Issa Bangwa AIV Sports Fritong.
Inside other sports use the head of uh head of the Africa Cup of Nation we go up inside Cameroon next year the Ministry of inside the Ministry of Information and Communication um be all one press conference so say they invite the Sierra Leone Football Association the National uh the National Sports Authority for give updates as how then done they prepare well um uh the secretary general when Christopher Kamar been talk about say they don't get about um names of players them where we don't submit so far for the tournament in set in set seven inside Cameroon well we talk this more to journalists them as how Leonstar done they prepare for this tournament here Issa Bangwa again get to you.
Permit us to do it and key amongst it is the preparation of the national team going to a qualified in June we had what we called a six month planning process that is a plan from July to December knowing fully well that the half corn starts in January key amongst it is we agreed that we'll play six international friends and all the six international friends must.
Well now all that to get inside sport will be four at the joint Samuel Ibrahim Koma one of the biggest news where people have for know about now that Musa Nuakama when they call Tumbu do officially tie the knot of him away now our Tumbu then they happen inside Bobo more of that story they will come to you now with prime time news well now that we get inside sport and back to you Samuel Ibrahim Koma. Plenty thank you to you Grant Ford McLean for that sport we eat Samari and we want for say congratulations to Musa Tumbu as he do officially join the League of Responsible Men. Definitely definitely. So plenty thank you to you once again for that sport story well now also we go tap to the addition of Creo use but we parable again say now before food be in food they fala if you want for tell me more about it but we news send we programs then we come on AIV Television and safe the radio you can send we email to info@ayvnews.com me and Samuel Ibrahim Koma and I say thank you and tata till we meet again.